Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a regular meeting of the City Council of Pearland for Monday, August the fourteenth, year 2017. Thank all of you for being here. If you will please rise, we'll have an invocation tonight by Councilmember Gary Moore and our Police Chief, Chief Craig Dontrater will lead us into Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your head with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We ask that you watch over each and every one of us here, give us wisdom in our decisions tonight, and look over each and every one of our police, fire, EMS, and men and women in the military serving at home here and abroad. Watch over each and every one of us as we go home tonight. We ask this all on your name. Amen.
You would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
To the Texas flag?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I want to express our appreciation for you being here tonight, and we are very appreciative of the Police Department allowing us to use the training room for our City Council's meetings. But it has some benefits and helps us a lot if you best behave, the jail is right down the hallway. And if you have a problem, we're well protected by young men in uniform. So I think we have made a good choice here, and I believe in about either December or January, we'll be back at City Hall if all goes well. So thank you all for being here tonight. Moving in our agenda, our roll call, which is item three on our agenda, and I'll be using the same agenda that you have in your hands, if you have one. Our City Council is here except with the exception of Councilmember Perez, who has taken a well-earned vacation and will be back again later. Moving in our agenda to item number four, which is citizen comments. And I do have two citizens who want to talk about a general issue, and then one that wants to speak on item number six in our agenda, and we'll get to that person at that point. The first one is Andrea Hernandez. Andrea, where are you? There you are. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Let's see. So I've written this out to make it easier. So Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you all for your service to the city. My name is Adrian Hernandez. I reside at 1431 Crystal Lake Circle East, Airline 77584. Came today to offer a few points regarding the current future consideration of conditional use permits for retail outside alcohol sales establishments. Many of you here today are familiar with my background. I would like it to be part of the record, I'm presenting this information for your consideration.
You might back off from the mic just a little bit. It gets overpowered.
All right. Be part of the record, I'm presenting this information for your consideration as an expert in the field of community health. I have a Master of Science degree in health education from Texas A&amp;M University. Dedicated countless hours to the study of health determinants and statistics, particularly those commonly tracked and assessed at neighborhood and municipal levels. And additionally, it's my personally held belief that it is a primary role of government bodies to protect and promote the health of its members, and that has brought me here today to plead my case to you, gentlemen. It was no simple task digging through the data, which are readily available and somewhat overwhelming on this topic. On the subtopic of violent crime by alcohol outlet density alone, there were over a dozen highly scrutinized, longstanding, peer-reviewed publications, all showing with varying degrees of significant correlation, the relationship between violent crime and liquor store density in neighborhoods across the country, just in my initial attempt at researching this topic. Though the data are unable to definitively prove whether outside alcohol sales establishments themselves lead to higher crime rates, the aggregate trends and theories do still offer evidence of a potential decay in those neighborhoods with high outlet densities. One such study, for instance, provided a summation of data showing that in a specific time period, after adding an outlet to a neighborhood, property crimes increased, and in areas where density continued to increase, property crime occurrences were seemingly displaced from those areas with lower densities to the areas with higher outlet densities, indicating crime mobility tied to those outlet locations. So from the perspective of community health as it relates to violent crime, council has an opportunity to exercise discretion on all new CUP approvals. Additional data in this area suggests higher outlet density correlates also with higher alcohol consumption. This has the potential to degrade the overall health of residents due to increased alcohol consumption, as well as increase the potential for alcohol-related or induced incidents within the city. It's my recommendation and request that the city conduct additional research as to the potential impact these outlets may have on both individual neighborhoods and the city as a whole. To appeal to those of you on council who believe in the practice of free market economics, which I do too, I encourage you to examine the role of council in protecting the brand of our city as well. Better health and lower crime comes higher property values, total market equity, which will have a greater net positive impact on the city overall. Members of council are vested with fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers in the city to protect our city's brand reputation and promote the overall well-being of its residents. This includes consideration of potential impacts from all available sources, the same degree of consideration given, for example, to school zones, speed limits, and environmental impact review. City planning, along with the approval and disapproval of conditional use permits, is well within the scope of City Council's duties and responsibilities. Additionally, I will happily volunteer to work with the city as a community health advocate to examine the potential impacts and cost benefits outside alcohol sales establishments they have on the city in order to provide a more well-researched and comprehensive direction for future city planning efforts. Thank you for your time.
Good. Appreciate those comments. Thank you so much. Next citizen is Jason Perry. Where is Jason? There he is. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Jason Perry. I have lived mostly in this city since 1992. I did live in the Montrose for a couple of years. I'm currently getting my PhD in finance, and I know a little bit about supply and demand, and I know the reason property values are good in Pearland and increasing is there's incredible demand. People want to live in this city. They want to buy houses in this city. That creates a huge demand because, you know, you can go to the supply and demand issue. And I think there's going to be an issue where we're going to be losing a demand of people who want to live here if they begin to lose sight of the vision of this city and the brand. My parents moved here because they thought it was quiet, family-oriented, low crime, good schools, and a good place to live. As Mr. Owens said on Facebook, people moved here because it's not Houston. It's an alternative to Houston. If people wanted to live in Houston, they would live there. I did live in the Montrose for a couple of years, and when I would drive down the streets, there were smoke shops, vape shops, smoke shops where you could buy drug paraphernalia for weed and various drugs, tattoo parlors, everything you can imagine. And I asked you to get on Dixie Farm at 5:18 and drive all the way to 288, and you will see vape shops and smoke shops and liquor stores and, you know, you name it. Tattoo parlors, and it just isn't the Pearland I remember in 1992. It's starting to look more like Houston and like the Montrose every day. And I don't want to see a day when someone says, "Oh, I'm thinking about moving to Pearland," and their friend responds, "Oh, the place with all liquor stores and tattoo parlors." I want them to respond, "Oh, the place with great schools, that's family-oriented, that has, you know, decent property tax, that's quiet, that's safe." I want people to continue to see this city the way that we all see it now. And I don't really care about tonight's, you know, votes on whatever. I'm just hoping that you keep that in mind, that you'll keep in mind what this city is really about. Because I know a lot of you are libertarian or free market. Let's talk about the free market. Let's talk about the demand on the houses, the demand on the acreage, the demand on to rent a retail space. If people start thinking this is kind of a slummy part of town, they're not going to want to buy a house, they're not going to want to buy land, they're not going to want to develop hotels or rent retail spaces, and we're going to see a depression in prices. So if we want to keep seeing better values and economic development, we've got to keep the brand and the idea of what is Pearland up. We've got to keep people thinking Pearland is this great alternative to Houston. Anyway, that's all I had to say. Thank you so much.
I appreciate your comments very much. Thank you. Good information in the record. Let's move to item five on our agenda. We have, some of you probably don't know about consent agenda, but about in the late 1998, 99 timeframe, our city charter was addressed with, by our Charter Review Commission, and they put on there a consent agenda, which is usually designed for items that are non-controversial and usually items that can flow real easily without any kind of discussion. And it did pass by 95% at that time, and it helped us an awful lot because we do have, I think, something like about close to 12 of them on the agenda tonight, so each one of those would have to be a separate action item, which takes considerable time. So this is, it's a good move, and it's something that has helped us considerably, and I appreciate the citizens making that consideration. Most cities have this as part of their agenda process. So our particular agenda tonight, we'll start off with Councilmember Carbone presenting this for our consideration.
Do you have to ask if anybody wants to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Okay. You have any items to pull?
I want to pull item E, Mayor.
You got an item to pull? Do you have an item to pull?
Yes, I'd like to pull item H. H?
H, okay.
E, E and H.
E, H, and J.
H and J, all right.
E, H.
E, H and J, all right. Easy, power, support. Go ahead. Okay, we have three items to pull for consideration. And Councilmember Carbone, would you present for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through J with the exclusion of E, H, and J, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion on that item? Eric Dunn, Mr. Secretary, we have motion on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed with six to zero, with Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
Moving in our consent agenda, item number E. Councilmember Carbone, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution R 2017-150, resolution awarding a unit supply contract for SCADA services, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a contract for maintenance of our SCADA system, and what SCADA is, is our water and wastewater utility systems. They have a number of electronics on the units that are spread around town that record data. We're building this to eventually being able to remotely manage that, but for now, we're in the maintenance mode, and we've broken out the contract that you may recall from previous years, broke down the different elements, and recommending this piece of it to Gray Matter for the amounts and term that's listed there.
Okay. Does the council have any question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, I do. It says Boyer, the response was, the other company that responded was at 144. Why are we going with Gray Matter?
The solicitation had an estimated number of hours, and then asked for the hourly rates of the two different firms, and then the solicitation had a further element to it, which was basically a response to a scenario where they would be working on an issue we have, we would potentially have within the SCADA system, a repair issue, and we asked them to evaluate that and recommend an approach, and the number of hours it would take them to address that particular issue. In that exercise, Gray Matter demonstrated a level of expertise and a number of hours thereby, the cost of each of those, about 96% lower than what Boyer submitted through those exercises.
Any other question or comment?
So basically, they came back at, their hourly rate was lower overall, or?
No, their hourly rates were what you see here, but when we gave them the scenario to migrate this particular data set in the exercise, Boyer came back with, I don't have the details, maybe someone from Public Works has the details, but Boyer came back with an extensive number of hours. Gray Matter said they could do that in much, many fewer hours, to where when you actually extend out the cost with the hourly cost, it was less costly with Gray Matter.
I don't know, but lawyers do the same thing.
So basically, they demonstrated that they could do the work more efficiently.
They do the same thing.
So if Andrea has more details, she could share those with you.
Basically, the two exercises were identical. We asked for a parameter approach to how would you solve this situation. Both had a response. We took that, and we narrowed that down further and said, "How many hours would you address this with?" Because we have an understanding of how the original contractor that we have functions. This is a new contractor. We had some interest in this sort of work, and we thought, "Let's see how they demonstrate." So when they approached that, it was much more streamlined, and it could be a demonstration of where we are going with the system, rather than the system that we had with the software upgrades. We tried to take all of the anomalies out of this exercise and have them respond in an apples-to-apples fashion.
So this will be the first time we've used them, all right?
We've used Gray Matter for some software upgrades, but this would be the first time that we would be wanting them to take our system and kind of move it citywide to a new level with software, and then there's some mobile capabilities that we're trying to get so that we can have staff monitor this remotely and have that capability at Public Works.
Thank you.
I've got a question, Mayor, on that. So the total amount of the bid is $163? Total amount, so we can read that in and not exceed $163,000 for both?
It's a unit supply contract at the hourly rates for an estimated amount of $163,000.
If that's all we've got scheduled in here, it's $163?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other question? Councilman, question? Eric Dunn, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
And Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed five to one, with Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
Information in the record, let's move to item H on our agenda. Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution R 2017-161, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. We're now, new staff report.
So MUD 6 is a existing MUD within the city's ETJ, and as part of the agreement setting that up, they've required to come to the city to get approval for issuing new bond issuance amounts. We met with them, they've identified with their engineers, maintenance and improvements to the system. It should be noted, the city is actually a partner in this with the other MUD, since we acquired MUD 1, I believe. So we also have a role ultimately in this. We did talk to them about the term of the issuance and agreed that 15 years was a reasonable amount of time to pay that back, matches up the life of the improvements, a little bit shorter than maybe normal, but, and a little bit longer than we started out with, but it was a good compromise, so recommend that for your consideration.
Okay. Mayor?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. Is there a financial advisor here?
Yes, there. Financial advisor and, I believe, attorney are both here.
Okay. Oh, good. I've got a question for each of them, if they don't mind coming up.
My name's Lauren Morales. I'm with RBC Capital Markets, financial advisor to the district.
First of all, thank you for being here. Looking at the proposed $4.8 million bond issue, and kind of how you have it scheduled out with the taxable values and future tax rates, in that schedule, you go over and have a debt service coverage ratio that is above 100%, but then it's as low as 70, and out in the tail years, you know, it's floating around, decreasing down to the 80%. I guess why, I would hope, well, anything less than 100%, the way I look at debt service coverage means that there's not enough revenue to pay the debt. So what's going on with that?
So that debt service coverage ratio is of the subsequent year's debt service. So if you take a look at, so the ending balance that you see in the top row is $2,638,000. That's 87% of the subsequent year debt service that you see there, $3,019,000. So that's kind of how you read that cash flow. Anything between 80% and 100% or a little bit over is standard for coverage of this for a MUD district.
Okay, so the years that's down closer to 70%?
That's just a reflection of the existing debt service of the district. I don't consider that a cause for concern at all, but we're not increasing the tax rate in the district. In order to increase that debt service coverage, you would have to increase the tax rate in the district, and we're not planning to do that.
Okay. I'm still, okay. All right. I guess the other question's on legal. Looking at the summary of costs page, it looks like legal fees are about $131,000 for this issuance?
That's correct. My name's Will Stafford, Schwartz, Peter Harding, Woody Attorneys with the Disher.
Okay, so it's $131,000 on about a $5 million issuance?
That's right.
Okay. So we've got, we've got some new money and some refi we're doing a little bit later for the tune of about $57 million, and our fees, legal fees are running about $50K. Can you help close that gap on why the MUD districts are so much higher?
Well, our fee is based on a contract with the district, which has certain parameters. MUDs typically issue much smaller amounts of debt, also refundings typically bond counsel fees are much lower than in a new money issuance. Also typically in municipal debt issuance, and I don't know the particulars of yours, but you would have several different councils collecting fees from that type of, bond counsel, disclosure counsel, et cetera, et cetera, all kind of engaged separately. With a MUD, to a smaller issue, it's more kind of a condensed project.
So in your $130K of legal fees, you're including rating agencies, financial advisor, trustee fees, and all that?
No, no. As the fee are for to issue the bond opinion, bond counsel opinion, as well as to review all the disclosure documents, review of the bond order, all the attenuation documents.
Okay. All right, well, I'm going to ask our financial advisor and our legal counsel on two agenda items to see if they can help close the gap, because I'm still about $80K difference. So, that's it. Thank you.
Can you repeat your comment?
Yes, sir.
Any other question or comment from council? Eric Dunn? We do have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Motion failed four to two, with Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
Okay. Information in the record, let's move to consent agenda, item number J, and ask Councilmember Carbone if he would present this for our consideration.
Certainly. Mayor, consideration and possible action, second and final reading of ordinance 1541, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, sir. This is relative, I believe, to the Massy Oaks subdivision, setting up a new MUD district deemed number 69.
Okay. Does the council have any question or comment on this item?
Mayor, I just asked for this item to be pulled because I voted against it. I want to vote for it on the consent.
Okay. Any other question or comment? Eric Dunn, we have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
No.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed five to one, with Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
Okay. Information in the record, let's now move into new business, which is section item six. New business item number one, Councilmember Moore, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first and only reading of ordinance number 1542, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, sir. As we've been discussing over the last several months, we've got debt financing in the form of certificates of obligation for capital projects, improvement projects around town. Certificates were sold, issued today, and John Warbuck, our financial advisor, is going to report out on that, and I believe also recap some of the other issues that have been finalized.
Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. John Warbuck, BOK Financial. Before we started, as you recall, we actually had two prior, we had two prior sales that we sold earlier this year, sold on July 18th. It was the $56,900,000 permit improvement refunding bonds, and also $60,970,000 water sewer system revenue and refunding bonds, Series 2, 2017C. As Mr. Pearson mentioned this morning, we sold the $6.2 million tickets obligation based on a notice of intent that the council approved back at the June 13th council meeting, and we're going to present to you the results of all three sales together. As you know, I like to go through the bond buyer index, it's the first thing we do. This is the bond buyer index. The red line represents the revenue index, which is water and sewer bonds. The blue line represents the general obligation index, which represents the PIBs we sold and also certificates of obligation. Look there on the far right, the revenue index is at 3.73%, and the GEO index is at Starting off with the general obligation bonds, these were part of the permit improvement and refunding bonds. These are the bonds that refunded. We refunded $37,535,000 of bonds that had interest rate ranging from 3.25% to 5%. Then as a result of the pricing, we broke, sold this one bond issue, we broke it out, refunding portion, new money portion, so you can see the savings and also the new debt for the voted authorization. Going from left to right, you have your current debt service requirements, and then less the bonds that are refunded, which we just mentioned, and then the principal on the new refunding portion, they're in the next two columns, and then they're highlighted in yellow as the savings. Based on the sale, we were able to save the city $5,198,530 in interest cost savings. And then the next two columns, the new money portion, we sold $21,890,000 of bonds, which generated proceeds of $24,245,000 for the city. And then the far right column is the resulting debt service after this sale of bonds. Final sources and uses, again, we broke it out between the refunding portion and new money portion. The refunding issued $35 million, roughly over $35 million in bonds, generated some premium, about $4 million, less your cost of issuance equals the total proceeds of $39,000, excuse me, $39,664,000, which will be deposited to escrow fund, which will pay the bonds off as they come due. At this point, once we close, these bonds will no longer be the obligation of the city. All cost on the refunding portion was at 2.889%. Again, we refunded $37,535,000 of bonds, again, savings of $5.2 million, savings percentage is 13.8%. Again, the new money portion, sold $21,890,000 of bonds, plus some premium of about $2.5 million, less cost of issuance, total proceeds of $24,245,000, which the city will receive upon closing. All cost on the new money portion was at 2.947%. All cost on the new money portion was at 2.947 percent. And then the water and sewer, we refunded four bond issues totaling 51,490,000. As you recall, water and sewer, we had the issue with the surety policies. We had to replace the surety policies with cash, and for the savings that we generated from the sale, we used that to offset the reserve fund requirement. This page shows the savings and also the new money portion. Again, they're in yellow, savings of 10,781,000 for the city. And then the principal amount for the new money portion, 15,315,000, which will generate 16,910,000 of proceeds for the city. Then here's a slide where we actually take out the reserve fund from the savings over the course of sixty months. And as you'll see, even after we take those reserve fund monies out, the savings goes from 10.7 to 7.3, which is still a 14.25 percent savings percentage, well above our three percent threshold. Final source and uses for the water and sewer, again, for the refunding portion, we sold 45,620. Generated proceeds for the escrow fund, 53,138,000. All cost interest rate on the refunding portion was at 2.645 percent. And again, we refunded 51,490,000, and the savings was almost 10.8 million dollars. On the new money portion, sold 15,350,000 in bonds, premium of a little... Close to 1.7 million dollars, less cost of issuance, total proceeds of 16,910,000 for the city. All cost interest rate on the new money portion was at 2.952 percent. And then for certificates of obligation, which we sold this morning, here's the debt service structure. Now, going from left to right, the current total debt service requirements, that includes the results of the permanent improvement refunding bond issue, which is scheduled to close on Thursday of this week, and then plus the principal interest for the total debt service requirements at the end of the year, they're in the far right column. We did sell 6,205,000 of bonds, which generated proceeds of 6,455,000 for the city. Final source and uses, again, 6.2 million dollars in bonds we sold, premium of 358,000, expenses of 107,000. And there's a little typo on here, the proceeds actually generated was 6,455,000, not 500 dollars. And all cost was at 2.953 percent. And then, again, on June twelfth, you authorize a noticement of obligations, which we did this morning, bring you the results tonight, asking for your approval. And then on the final page, we're here on the fourteenth, asking you to approve it. And then on the seventeenth, which is Thursday this week, we'll close permanent improvement refunding bonds and also the water and sewer bonds, and then we'll close the certificates on your approval on September seventh. It's great news, low rates.
That completes your report, huh?
Yes, sir, it sure does.
I like your interest rates.
Yes, sir.
Those are very impressive, and gotta keep those rolling, so...
You're very well-known in the market.
That's right. Council have any question or comment on this item? Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. If you go back to slide four, just so I can see the sources and uses. So, and let's just look at the right side, the new money portion.
Yes, sir.
When I look at that, what is bond council getting paid?
$19,000.
Okay, on how much debt are we issuing?
On this portion is 21,890,000.
All right, and earlier, I think you were listening, that we're... A MUD's issuing $5 million of debt, and we're getting charged $130,000 for legal fees. You got any... Would you like to opine as to the difference there?
Prefer not to, but I can tell you that MUDs are a different animal. Typically, their rates, their bond council financial charges are typically higher because they are smaller, because they're just smaller amounts. But again, without working for that MUD, I can't answer my question.
Well, if taking a step further, if you're the FA for a MUD, I mean, at some point, I would have a fiduciary issue with paying an exorbitant fee like that.
By my tongue.
That's a very political answer. And I would like to clarify, in the past, I've made a stink about these first and only readings. I understand why we have to do it here for the issuance of the COs and staff, and everybody's done a great job of communicating that ahead of time, so I appreciate that. And I don't mind at all having this on the first and only. And I think the prior bond council already stepped out of the room. I was hoping they could stick around, but...
Okay.
I did when... Tanya Fisher, your bond council, is here, speaking of bond council. I meant to mention her, I apologize.
I'm the one who's getting the nineteen.
You keep him honest, don't you?
Not enough to stand up.
Had to complete it, yeah. You know, with that type of interest rates, we must have some pretty good credit rating. Sure do. Council have any other question or comments?
I just got one from a clarification. If you take the two areas of bonds there, and we've got one without standing, 456 million? And then your water and sewer bonds, 270 million, all together?
Yes, sir, that's for total debt service requirements.
So we're about 700 and something million dollars, we're almost getting in some serious money, almost close to a billion dollars in debt. I think that's something we really should consider.
And I will... I'll point out that the writing companies look at the principal amount, this total debt service requirement, this is where it's at.
Any other question or comment? Hearing none, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
And Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero, with Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number two, Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution number R-2017-157, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. A staff report.
Thanks, sir. We have a major capital project for a wastewater system, building a diversion line, trying to eventually move some of the wastewater flows from Longwood down to Magnolia, I believe? Very Rose, sorry. And so this project furthers that. This is the construction contract. The amounts did come in a little higher than estimated and budgeted, but we do have savings from other projects to be able to cover that.
Council have any question or comment on this item? Don't hear anything. Do you have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Ordno, got your little sequence there. Councilmember Owens? Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero, with Councilmember Perez absent from the chamber.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number three, new business. Councilmember Ordno, would you present this for our consideration?
Consideration of possible action, resolution number R-2017-144, so moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, we're in discussion. Staff report.
We've got a recommendation here, we're locking in our natural gas prices, and Mr. Branson's been working with a consultant. They've recommended that we do lock it in now, believe the market's as good as it's gonna get for the amounts that are mentioned in the agenda item.
Council have any question or comment on this item? Hearing none, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
What about me?
I'm sorry. Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Now we got that six to zero. Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number four, Councilmember Little, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution number R-2017-163, so moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, and we're in discussion. Staff report.
The City of Pearland is the recipient of direct funding from the federal government through community development block grants. They issue these, and we can distribute these within certain parameters, certain geographic areas, social service programs, et cetera. And so we've gone through a process that's prescribed to have a couple of hearings, and recommending the package for the upcoming action plan and next five-year consolidated plan, as suggested here.
And that money is taken and used on some very, very worthwhile and very much needed projects. Council have any question or comment on this item?
Just a quick comment, Mayor. Thank you to Mr. Hardy for working so hard to get these grants. In the future, you know, these may not be available, so I'm glad that we're able to get this this year and use it for some of the great things that we do here in the city with that money. So thank you.
Okay, any other question or comment? Hearing none, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero, with Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
Okay, moving in our agenda, new business item number five. Councilmember Owens, would you present this for our consideration?
Yes, Mayor, consideration of possible action for free, and ordinance number 2000M-162, so moved.
Second.
Okay. We do have a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission, who at their July eighteenth meeting considered this as a request. And after discussion, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this by a vote of six to zero, and I enter that this into the proceedings tonight, as we proceed. Staff report, Mr. Ford.
Ms. McBride is ready to talk about this plan development for redevelopment in the Rice Drier area, off thirty-five.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a request for a change in zoning from light industrial to a planned development with a base zone of light industrial and general commercial. It's generally located at the southwest corner of Rice Drier and North Main Street, with an address in 1916 North Main Street. The UDC lists a certain criteria for planning, for a group of planned developments, and the list is displayed on the screen. The future land use map labels this use as industrial, and it also labels it as public and public. This is a two-phase site plan, with the two phases being, the first phase being general commercial and the back being industrial. The rendering showing phase one, which is the commercial phase. The second rendering shows the industrial phase, which is phase two. This PD meets all of the co-criteria with the exception of one, which is plating. And additionally, it does have some variations to the UDC in regards to general commercial and light industrial. Not all of the uses that are found in the general commercial districts or the light industrial districts will be allowed in this PD. During the joint public hearing, a representative from the Third Coast Terminal spoke in opposition. Their mainly concerns were the uses that would be allowed in the commercial area. So PNC recommended that the applicant reach out to those individuals. Staff actually tried several attempts to reach out to the individual, and finally, we actually spoke with them last week, and they still had some concerns over the uses that would be allowed in the commercial section of the PD. The PNC recommended approval of the PD by a vote of six to zero. And this concludes staff report.
Good, thank you. Okay, does council have any question or comment at this point on this? I think that's an area of our city that was here many years ago, and it used to come down here before the turn of the century. You could always see those Rice Drier columns there, so it's... Trying to convert that into something that's very useful and very compatible with the type of community we have, I think it's gonna work out real well. Council have any question or comment at this point on this? Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. As staff mentioned, there was quite a bit of discussion at the JPH in terms of uses for, I believe, a few of the buildings that were in a certain radius. Was the land use table or anything updated since that JPH? Could you just add a little bit more flavor to what has occurred since then that we know of?
The land use table is the same that we had during the JPH. We actually definitely attempted to, with the concerns of the representatives of the Third Coast, we attempted to reach out to them to see if there were any particular uses that they were not in favor of. Once again, we didn't have a good opportunity to speak with them. They sent out several emails and several phone calls. It just so happened that that representative showed up at our forum last week, and staff just used that opportunity to speak with them. They had no suggestions of particular uses that they were concerned about, but they were still kind of confused about the use. No changes have been made to use table following JPH.
So this is a first reading. There's still time between the first and the... Assuming it passes tonight, there's still time to update that use table. If Third Coast or any representatives are here, maybe Matt has the answer.
Matt Buchanan, so two things. So we sent, after the meeting, right at the end of the meeting, we sent the use tables to them so they could go through the PD and look at them. And then I've reached out to Mr. Karns twice and haven't heard back from him. So I'm assuming that they either don't have any concerns, but then when we did this, this use table is specific to this, so I think like gymnastics academies and stuff like that that they were concerned or that were located east over on Halleck are not in this use table and won't be allowed. So I'm thinking that their silence is... But I can try to reach out to Griff again one more time.
I'd like to attempt it one more time.
Sure, I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
Any other question or comment? Mayor? I ran into the representative from Third Coast that was here at the earlier meeting, and he stated that they still had those same concerns about the potential for lost business, and that some of those types of businesses, like gymnastics, were located within a certain number of feet from their business. And he said that he would be here at the meeting to express those concerns. I know Councilman Carbone suggested at that last meeting that maybe they reach out to... The two parties get together and talk about it, and apparently that never happened. So maybe an effort could be made to get those two parties together at least one more time.
We're happy to get the two parties together. I don't know if it's really a negotiation between the two parties, per se, and I don't know if that meeting would go that well, because if I'm the owner who's applying here, I mean, I have every right to do those uses, just because, I mean, it's an M1 zone, so it's not like we're putting general commercial or general business next to their business. It's M1 zone, it's the same basic zone and underlying uses that they have. So I'll try to communicate with them again, but they need to communicate that with us, and then we can visit with the applicant if there's any changes that need to be made. But I think we feel pretty good that things they're concerned about aren't in the PD document.
I'll probably run into him again tomorrow, we do the same workout class on him. So I'll check with him and see if they're...
I've been reaching out to Griff Karns, and that's normally... Griff was the other... There was two people here from Third Coast that night, and Glenn is their HR director. So we're happy to sit down and talk to them about it.
Thank you.
Yes, if you could try to get those two parties together, because no matter what gets built over there, if it's within that distance, they're either not gonna be allowed to renew their permit, or they're gonna have to do modeling, and then the modeling's gonna show that they're too close. But there is a way that they can work with the new landowner, and they can sign a waiver that says, hey, it's okay, and then it'll go before TCQ and they can approve it. So it's important if those two can talk, because I'd hate to lose third... those two can talk, 'cause I'd hate to lose Third Coast, but I mean, there's gonna be something that gets built in that piece of land at some point in time.
That's the challenge. But hopefully, the uses that we have that are allowed, that they would be fine, I think hopefully, they're fine with all those uses, and they've, they've had those for a month to look at, so.
To state the obvious, the land's been for sale, so if they're that concerned, they could've bought it. I mean.
Maybe they still can.
Any other questions or comment? Better information in the record. Let's move. We did have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Owens? Councilmember Owens?
This is the first reading. I'll, I'll say aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero with Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
Okay, that information in the record. Let's move to item number six on our new business agenda. Councilmember Carbone, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance CUP 17-00003. So moved.
Second.
Okay. We do have a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission who did meet after consideration. They did review this in detail, and it did fail by a vote of, a vote of six. And we do have a citizen who would like to speak on this, Mr. Lanny Cade. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. As always, thank y'all for everything you do for the city, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I think y'all know what I'm gonna say. I think that there's too many liquor stores already in this, in this city, and this particular liquor store going in where it will be located is insulting, insulting in so many ways, considering what happened there. And I know there was not a liquor store there at the time. I know that alcohol was not sold in Pearland at the time. I've heard all the arguments as to why it shouldn't matter, but it, it does. I don't think there should be a liquor store right there. And I just don't think there should be. I think it's an affront to, to him, his family, his memory, and not to mention the fact that there are too many already going in right there. If their audit HUB is approved, there would be how many? Five in a, four in a five-mile radius, I don't know, five in a five-mile radius. And I understand the free market argument. I just don't exactly agree with it in this case. I think that there is a responsibility to maintain Pearland, the Pearland brand, if you will, looking at all the documents, the government, the city, they all talk about planning, all of them. There's a focus on that. And this is not, go along with that. The ethics are important. The main corridors are important, and 518 is, is a main corridor, and keeping it looking good is, is a good deal. So, all that in mind, I respectfully appeal to y'all to please not approve of it.
Okay. The staff report.
So, again, Ms. McBride will give you an overview. Just to be clear, so we're all on the same page, too. Mr. Koker shared that even though there was a negative recommendation to the simple majority of council that for the simple, for the conditional use permit, so. But Jay will give you an overview.
Thank you. Once again, this is a request for the approval of a CUP to allow a liquor and package store in the general commercial area with a general location of 20, 2530 East Broadway Street. The slide on the screen shows the criteria for approval of the UDC, of the CUP in the UDC. The property has a future land use designation of retail, office, and service. This map shows the other liquor and package stores that have been either approved, pending, or have applied for an application within the first buffer. It's a one-mile buffer, and then the second buffer is two-mile radius buffer. This is a site plan showing the, the views and where it will be located. Prior to tonight, we didn't receive any opposition for or against, any support for or against the approved application. However, you did hear opposition tonight. In regards to our co-compliance, it met all of the criteria for our co-compliance. And the application request was denied at the P&amp;Z meeting by a vote of zero to six. P&amp;Z also stated that they needed the city to come up with some type of criteria to approve this type use. And that concludes staff report.
Better information in the record. Is there, Counsel have any question or comment at this point?
I do. I have, go ahead.
Brother Owens.
Well, number one, there's no way I'd even vote for this thing. And, and then I think it's been pretty well stated from two previous speakers up here earlier, and that, you know, when you start moving it out, and you, and you, the one on, that's pending over there at HUB, and the other one that, that, the two off Walnut in there. But I, I think in coming on, on us of this location where this is, if you go 1.3 miles, you'll go into Friendswood and the Potter Store and where they're located at now, and then where they moved out of. So, you'd have, you know, in there, you'd have five within that location. And I think it's just getting to be too, too many. I, I think Pearland's better than that. I think our dirt is better than that on there. And I understand why they're coming to the west side because of cheaper rent and lease than it would be on the west side or whatever. But it doesn't make many difference which side of town it's on. It doesn't make any difference at all. And then if you, you know, come in on each one of them, you've got eight or nine already. I mean, how many do we have to have? And I think, you know, one of these, if, if we're gonna approve any other on, on the liquor stores, I think on the CUP, I think it ought to be noted at the bottom, that's a liquor store. I talked to one of the commissioners the other day, and he said he's got two in his front door. And people didn't know that it was gonna be a liquor store coming in. So, I think, you know, I think it should be noted of what's coming in. I think, you know, you can saturate the market with it. And I'm as much on free enterprise as anything else, but I, you know, I think, I think we need to look at the overall needs. I think we've got better uses of the land, better use of the building, and everything else that we have on this side, and we don't have to have any more liquor stores. So, I'll be voting no on that one, any others.
When, when the applicant applies for these, for the CUP, are they given anything that shows where other liquor stores are either scheduled to come in or already are? Because I've had one of the owners make a comment to me that if he knew that he was that close, he probably would not have went there. He would look for another location.
Originally, when the uses started coming up, the applicants were not giving any, or not currently giving anything where other uses are. But in the applications now, we've started including that density map with all of our applications, and that's something new that we started doing so that others can see where other proposed, pending, or approved liquor stores are located.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I can, I mean, I, I appreciate, well, I'm not for this one, but I mean, that's a fine line. I, I don't want the, the role of, of the city to put people on notice on where their competitors are. I mean, if I'm foolish enough to go open a mattress store or coffee shop next to four other ones that are coming, shame on me that I didn't do my homework. So, I mean, I understand it in this regard. It really makes sense, but I, I think that's a slippery slope at some point. And I guess for this one, I'm okay, but I don't want it, at least in my opinion, I don't want this body saying, hey, we want you to put, put everybody that comes to and apply for a permit or a zoning or a CUP to outline where their competitors are, where their competitor, or where their competitors are coming in the future. But that's just my opinion. I don't know if other council views that as the role of, of city and city staff.
Just for clarification, we're only including them in the packet. Those maps only be included in the.
In the, in the packet. So, we're not giving them?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other question or comment?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm struggling with this one, too. I consider myself a free-market guy, and, and I don't like to, the government intrude. But I've seen a lot of discussion on social media about this, and it seems to be, for the most part, people are against it. And it's right across the street from a church. It's pretty close to a school, and the library and City Hall. It's right there where Officer Acponya was, was killed. So, you know, I, I see our role in these CUPs as, you know, trying to fulfill what, what the citizens want in Pearland by deciding whether or not it's a good location for it. And, and in this case, I just don't feel like it is. So, I, I'm gonna vote no.
Any other question or comment? Hearing none, we do have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
No.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Motion failed four to two with Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
If I may, though, just real quick, I, I voted against it for, for a couple reasons, but, you know, there's another one coming up on Pearland Parkway, and it seems like a lot of the comments have been, you know, we don't want liquor stores. I didn't vote against that because I didn't want liquor stores or because it was crowding a certain area. But the voters, not the people that are in here maybe, but the voters as a whole voted for this. I mean, it went to the polls, just like everything else goes to the polls, and the voters said yes. They said this is what they wanted. Next week, we're gonna vote on another one. I mean, you know, it's been said many times on this board since, in the two years that I've been here, we can't dictate what business does. And so, I just wanna make that comment. But again, the voters, the voters voted on this. The majority of Pearland said that this is what they wanted.
Seventy percent. Seventy percent.
Well, it may have.
Moving into our agenda to item numbers.
And there's not one on every corner.
Yeah, it is.
No, there's.
It is.
Moving to item number seven on our agenda. Councilmember Moore, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number CUP 17-00011. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. We have, we have a little question here whether I should present the Planning Commission's report, or maybe I'll let you present it this time since I did it last time. We have motion second on the floor. We're now, staff report.
I'll let Jay go through this again as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a request for approval of a CUP to allow for a quadruplex in the Old Town Mixed Use District, generally located at 2543 and 2545 Texas Avenue. It has a future land use designation of village district. This is a copy of the site plan. This is also a rendering of the site. Staff received no comments, no public comments in support or opposition of this proposed use. The proposed use also meets all of the criteria in regards to the code. And P&amp;Z passed this motion, made a motion to approve this request by a vote of six to zero. And that concludes staff's report.
Okay. Information in the record. Does Counsel have any question or comment on this item? That's over on, off of Walnut Street, isn't it? I see a sign over there, but there's a single house being constructed. Is that one of Moore, or is that?
This, that's a different application.
Okay.
Mayor, there's another four-plex right across Texas Avenue from it, and then right around the corner, they're already building one. So, seems to be a common theme in that area.
Is that right? Oh, yeah, okay. All right. Any other question or comment? Hearing none, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero with Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
Moving into our agenda to item number eight. Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number 1497-4. So moved.
Second.
Better information in the record?
Yes, sir. Staff's worked with the two public school districts, largest ones in town that have multiple facilities, reviewed all the design engineering criteria, and is up, recommending updated links and sections for school speed zones, trying to get those set up before start of school Thursday for Alvin and next Monday for PIS, I believe.
Counselor, have any question or comment on this item? Hearing none, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Abstain.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed five to one with one abstention, and Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
Moving into our agenda to item number nine. I'll ask our staff, play our city manager to present this.
I'll actually turn this over to Dr. Chris Rolia. He's been working with consultant, been working on a diversity plan, trying to reach out to different segments of the community and make sure we're hitting all the right notes for outreach and programs. And so, turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I was trying to look for a good way to introduce this, and in the executive summary in the white paper that was provided earlier, I thought that was really concise, and it really hit home. As Houston's approaching, taking that place, proudly taking that place from Chicago is the third-largest metropolitan area in the US. Houston has a unique sentiment to it, that the diversity in it is robust, and that's defined all across races, ethnicities, orientations. It ticks all of those boxes. So, in January, we did contract with the firm Diversity On Demand through Dr. Carmen Carter, and through some consultation with this board, shared that we were gonna look at not what, but who made the city of Pearland important. It's been a very exciting eight months working with Dr. Carmen Carter and finding out that everyone is, they're not just excited to be Pearlanders, they're proud to. We, we looked into this and wondered what was going to come out of it, and it's just been phenomenal numbers of relationships and, and an action plan. What Dr. Carmen Carter is gonna share with you today is gonna be an overview of what Pearlanders are feeling, what they're seeing, some ideas of what they see about us as a city. And then in a workshop shortly after this meeting, Dr. Carter is gonna sit down and present some action steps that'll actually be put in place by staff, and we will continue to stick with what we dedicated ourselves to doing initially. That's not asking for additional budget dollars. It's just altering the ways that we program things within what we are already doing to better meet those needs. So, without further ado and without stealing anything from her reports, I'd like to introduce Dr. Carmen Carter.
So, I can put this down just, just a tad. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Carmen Carter, and it is an honor and a privilege to have been a part of your journey. And if you would allow me to just kinda give you some context, our firm is Diversity On Demand. We are a talent management and intentional inclusive community organization. We work with organizations across the US looking at what does cultural equity look like from a very non-traditional way. So, if you would allow me to spin about. So if you would allow me to spend about fifteen, twenty minutes with you to walk through this presentation and then answer any question you may have, I'd really appreciate it. There's significance to the actual title. The title is Working Together Towards a Beloved Community. And one of the things that we actually do when we come in, we do what we call initial current state assessment before we actually do a focus group. Just some acknowledgements of individuals that have actually participated. You'll see that we were just uniquely fortunate to have so many individuals in the Pearland community being concerned about cultural equity and inclusion and what that meant, from Department of Parks and Recreation all into the churches, community organizations, nonprofit organizations, and social service providers. If I could just jump right into this, if I will, on page, inside of that, if you should have that in your actual agenda, I'll walk through this with you. On page five, you will actually have the actual introduction to that on page five. And how I, how we look at this work is from the perspective of agriculture. So we'll tell a narrative and tell a story, and so we'll think about an ecosystem of interdependence. What we learned initially is there are different definitions of diversity and inclusion. It conjures up different meanings to different people from all walks of life. That can be good, and sometimes that can be problematic when we're trying to ascertain what the brand is for the community. And so what you'll see here, well, let me just kinda step back just a moment and sort of lay out sort of the actual purpose of the study, the theoretical framework, sort of our research and design method, the research questions that we ask, our population study, how we actually did the pilot study, the data collection, the actual findings, the significance of the findings and the recommendations. Now, Dr. Rolia did share that this is just an overview, but there are some findings that are significant that will have some implications for the city and the city leadership and those I will be sharing here today. So we, so there are, in the city of Pearland, there's a belief that the idea of an intentionally inclusive community is the most desired state of the human family. And so the purpose of the study, if you would turn to page six and as part of your agenda, if you look at page six, you will see the actual purpose of the study. I'll be able to see it on the screen, but if you have your hand out, you will. But the purpose of the study was to intentionally solicit feedback to further the city's understanding of views missing or broken as part of the Parks and Recreation Department's goal to ensure social equity. So the data gathered will serve as a knowledge base to be utilized to gain an understanding of the perceptions of the residents about the quality of life and well-being of the city of Pearland. Now, you'll see in the actual summary, the summary talks about Pearland being one of the fastest-growing cities in Texas. That's positions on a growth curve. And when we did our initial research, we saw the actual diversity that's driving a lot of the city of Pearland, and that's associated with your actual brand. We'll give you some, just some additional details in terms of how we actually went about the study. The demographic highlights, we were looking at three demographic strata that we received from the city. We looked at religion, we looked at socioeconomics, and then we looked at race. Just of a high level, the focus group participants, there were twenty-six participants in three groups, with sixty percent male, forty percent female, forty-eight percent non-white, fifty-two percent white, with a combined reach of five thousand residents. What's significant about that is our approach to the work. The type of study is what we call a phenomenological study. It's based on hermeneutical pharmacology, which looks at an intentional effort to go out and target specific individuals in the community. The city of Pearland has done a phenomenal job with research. You have the actual data in terms of your demographics, that's changing. But when we're looking at what's an intentionally inclusive community, we are very intentional in terms of who we actually target. One of the things that's significant that we did as, we learned as a part of our research is that the city of Pearland is limited in terms of its landmass. It's limited in terms of its landmass, in terms of fourteen to sixteen square miles that you'll have to build out, as well as the infrastructure, as it particularly pertains to social services. So as a result of that, we actually went out and intentionally solicited churches, churches as well as social service providers, as well as civic leaders in the community. Now, the representation that we had in the actual focus group, we had nine, at least nine to ten churches. We had one mosque that represented Islam, Christianity, we had the Buddhist temple, and we had a host of civic leaders. We additionally, we benchmarked the city of Houston, Houston Profile Equity Report that was done in 2013. One of the reasons that we do this is to make sure that the data that we provide is actually relevant and aligned with your strategic priorities. So as part of our initial process, we actually look at your strategic priorities, we benchmark what's actually going on in the area, and then we target specifically what does that mean in the city of Pearland. So what we were trying to find out from this study is what exactly does cultural equity and inclusion mean? Okay, it means different things to different people, and we were really fascinated with what we found. We had three focus group forums that were held at the city of Pearland Parks and Recreation Department on 4141 Bailey Avenue in Pearland. Again, those individuals were recruited based on what we call a phenomenological study with propositive sampling. What propositive sampling is, that is a non-sampling method that does not look at random sampling. What that means is that we actually intentionally go out and target those individuals who we believe can have access into the community. In addition to that, we solicited, and just through casual anonymous conversations in the community, there were seventy-five anonymous voices in the community. And whether that was in parks, whether it's in parking lots, retail establishments, or restaurants, we would walk up to folks and say, "Hey, what's it like to live in the city of Pearland?", and they would actually share. And so what you're looking at here, if you would turn to page nine and ten, are you? So, so there's a set of research questions here. So again, you'll see the focus group purpose on page eight, you'll see the site selection and the focus group participants. So here is, as I was reading, you can actually see who the sessions were conducted with. There was an interfaith group, again, that was civic leaders representing diverse cross-sections of the community, and that was Christianity, Islam, Bluzo, non-denominational, and we also looked at folks who were too indifferent to care. So those are folks that were agnostics or didn't identify at all. We had conversations and participants were city government, civic leadership, social services, adult literacy, women empowerment, civil rights advocacy, and youth development. And again, what is significant about this is that based on this approach to the work, we can get the greatest amount of reach with the fewest amount of people. So the combined region, this is a very conservative estimate of about five thousand people. Very conservative estimate. The questions we asked, we started with looking at civic leaders. So we wanted to get an understanding of what did civic leaders think about cultural equity and inclusion, and then we went out and compared that to the community. And as a result of that, our findings will show, are we on our alignment, or is there some opportunity for growth and development? So you'll see our initial questions, we started with the opening question, and one of the questions was, suppose you had five minutes to talk to the community about cultural equity and inclusion, and what would you say? Okay, and again, we asked these questions of all groups, all individuals, and we were not able to find a consistent definition of what that actually meant in the city. And so that's very profound and significant in terms of an opportunity for the city to define what cultural equity and inclusion and diversity means to the city of Pearland. Some of the comments we got is that diversity is just the front piece, rather than being able to define what it actually means to the viability of the community. We then asked additional key questions, we talked about diversity, we asked if there's a business case for it, and we looked at, more importantly, we looked at the ending questions, we asked each and every one of them, what do you believe are important challenges the city of Pearland will face in the next two years? On page nine, you'll see just the additional question. For the most private questions, the key questions are consistent, but they were modified depending on the group that we were targeting. So these were the questions on page nine, you'll see, as the city of Pearland civic leadership volunteers. These were the questions we asked, the interfaith spiritual leaders, very similar. And these were the questions I would ask about diverse cross-section. Now, this diverse cross-section included religious leaders, social service providers that work with individuals that will underserve, as well as those who work with individuals from different cultural or racial backgrounds. This question here you'll see is, what you'll see highlighted in red, as we continue to look at this, we identify emerging themes. And this particular one I show as an example because it actually sets the tone for what diversity actually means or how it will manifest in the community. But there are levels of discomfort and mixed feelings in the community about Pearland's rapid growth, diversity, and the role of government. So there's a lot of confusion about that. So depending on that individual's worldview and their walk of life, there's different and mixed feelings, and even some resentment about the growth and diversity. Some folks even want the diversity and growth to stop, and others think it's absolutely fantastic. And so when we asked this question about living in Pearland, and you heard some of the guests speak tonight, it said residents feel the city has a lot to offer, and some people describe it as a glorious city. Individuals share how much they love living in Pearland. Families are attracted to the diversity, the school districts, and individuals take comfort in what they feel is a safe, quiet, and peaceful community. They shared that as a bonus to living in Pearland is a geographic proximity to places of employment, to city life, to airports, to waterways, and the multicultural communities of faith. It was really significant for the city, and folks really enjoyed that. Together make Pearland an attractive city of residents representing many walks of life, cultures, and faith. Now, I share this because when we think about the maturing US population and the implications of the city of Pearland, it has some potential to shrink the local economy as what we found was the less affluent, including the single working mothers and young couples, is more than likely the demographics primarily driving the local economy. And based on the comments from the social service providers, those individuals are now feeling a little excluded because of what they call the high-mut taxes, and they're not as affluent. And so part of what our findings were indicated that when we think about those families that are attracted to the city of Pearland, the working family, and the same demographic that drives the diversity in the school system, those are the families that are at risk of being priced out of the community from their perspective. And so what we learned from this is that when we look at issues of socioeconomics, that's not quote-unquote "just an individual of color issue", that's an issue that impacts socioeconomics. And so we think about diversity and the implications of diversity, it crosses all racial, all ethnic, and all gender lines. So that was a significant finding for us. We also looked at the impact on the city as a growing cosmopolitan city. If you look at your actual handout, now go to if you turn to page fourteen. One of the things that we found was absolutely profound was a quote from you, Mayor Reed, in the State of the City address in February of 2017, and I'm on page fourteen. And we're looking at Pearland history initially from six thousand four hundred and forty-four to almost a hundred thousand now. And so in this quote, if you look at the second paragraph, it says, "As a growing cosmopolitan city, Pearland is recognized as an upscale contemporary suburban city offering attractive lifestyle with young-employed couples, a diverse community, quality schools, and extensive public services." The reason we share this is because when we think about what a cosmopolitan city is, that cosmopolitan city is diverse and where a multitude of cultures are represented. So there are some significant business drivers that impact being a cosmopolitan city. We specifically looked from the World Atlas in 2017, where they describe a city such as Dubai and the United Arab Emirates as it's astounding eighty-four percent of its population born outside the country has experienced rapid growth. And so what the city of Dubai contributes to its rapid growth and being a world-class cosmopolitan city is its actual great diversity. So that's significant. So when we think about what that actually means in Pearland, if you look on page fifteen, we look at some, we provide some additional data in terms of the city of Brussels in Belgium, we looked at Canada, we looked at Sydney, Australia, but more importantly, we looked at Los Angeles in the United States. And so part of our findings, and some of you may already know this, there are seventy-five different dialects in Pearland ISD. There are eighty-five different languages that are already heard in the streets of Los Angeles. And what that means is that even though the city of Pearland is not the size of the city of Los Angeles, it still has some of the same challenges as the city of Los Angeles. And so even if the infrastructure isn't there, those same challenges associated with having a diverse population is a part of that community. And so what we were able to ascertain is that there currently exists an opportunity for the city of Pearland to begin cultivating new ways to intentionally think about diversity and cultural equity while uniquely positioning Pearland to reap the harvest of the generations to come. And so we started with preparing to feel about what does diversity mean. We planted seeds in terms of our methodology. We sort of nurtured the soil in terms of looking at what are some of those, what are some of those challenges? And so I will go back just a moment here. So on this slide here, slide thirteen, we asked our interfaith leaders, who were very, very, very supportive of this effort. Suppose you had few minutes to talk to the city of Pearland leadership officials about cultural equity and inclusion, what would you say? And so three things, we pulled out the salient points in terms of data, but you'll see they say, "I'm not aware of any initiatives that are inclusive in nature, that are intentionally created and marketed to create awareness." They also suggested that their programs initially created to bridge the cultures and diversity in the city. And then you'll see number three, part of that dialogue said there was a disappointment that the city has known for a while that it was one of the fastest-growing cities in the nation, but the leadership has not responded to it, and having it, knowing it, was still keeping it comfortable. So you can see there across the board in terms of different layers of individuals in the community have a different perspective on what diversity means. So in summary, the initial study of perceptions of cultural equity and inclusion in the city of Pearland finds that diversity, cultural equity, and inclusion conjures up different meanings for different people. There is confusion about the role of government, level of leadership commitment, and the vision for diversity, cultural equity, and inclusion. What we also found was that interfaith leaders and nonprofit social service providers are best positioned to help the city and willing to develop a vision for the future, provide leadership, and support programs that are more inclusive in nature. They're already doing it. There's an opportunity to intentionally address challenges associated with being less affluent, such as poverty, access to resources, and affordable housing, which transcends all religions, all races, working mothers, and young couples in the Pearland community. We also, we also were curious as to how many people in the community were using Parks and Recreation Services. And in a multicultural community, we learned that churches, mosques, and temples primarily serve as a hub for family and community life in the community. And so you'll see a lot of individuals in more culturally diverse communities actually spend time in those actual communities themselves. There are services that individuals in the community absolutely love. They love the Citizens Police Academy, they like the International Festival, love the concerts in the park, they enjoy the coffee with the cop, and also the services that the Parks and Recreation Department actually provides. I would ask why individuals were not using the services of Parks and Recreation Department. They talked about it being a commuter city. Most folks commute outside the city of Pearland, and whereas they would use those services by the time they get back in and pick up their children, they send it retired. Okay, so a lot of individuals actually commute outside the city of Pearland. One individual described it as living in but checking out. So they live in, but they check out every morning, they come back in and get their day started. So we certainly commend the Department of Recreation Department for the work that they're doing. Additionally, one of the things that is an area of, was an area of concern for all three groups, and that was what they consider bridging the divide. And it's our understanding that this isn't new. It's referring to parts of the city as East Pearland and West Pearland. And what that does, we learn, is that it's perceived as us versus them, and causes deep feelings of resentment, isolation, and exclusion. And then lastly, there's a strong desire for greater representation for more culturally diverse talent and position of leadership and higher responsibility in the city government. for more culturally diverse talent and position of leadership and higher responsibility in the city government. There, you'll see there's also some common themes. On page seven, what we did with all the actual groups, we combined all the common themes for all three of them. We looked at it and aligned them with your strategic priorities in terms of the engaged community and then the Parks and Recreation Department vision to... Increase the well-being of individuals from people at Parks and Program. Wow, that's a... And so if you look at the focus group highlights, again, the demographic was twenty-six participants of three groups, seventy-five voices in the community, with a reach of greater than five thousand. Again, each group identified specific opportunities that pertain to cultural equity and inclusion, individuals from different religions, socioeconomic, and racial backgrounds. And so we recognize that the needs addressed were unique to those individuals. However, what we did was we identified cross-cutting themes that were common to each group. So the cross-cutting and common themes were intentional leadership, a need for training, education, and accountability for city officials, public servants, and staff around diversity and inclusion, to include establishing benchmarks consistent with the organization's commitment and support for cultural equity and inclusion and bridging the east-west divide. Under people and programs, a need to increase cultural awareness and develop strong and vibrant special emphasis programs, and our citizen advisory groups that would create a voice to help foster more inclusive decision-making and to provide a clearinghouse for community resources, expression, issues, discussions, and actions. Under policy, a need to review the policies, practices, and procedures for the developmental training and hiring because of the underrepresentation of individuals from ethnically diverse backgrounds within the city government. And lastly, but certainly not least, is communication. A need to build trust and have better communication regarding cultural diversity goals, objectives, and plans. One of the things that we particularly thought was important was some of the recommendations. As Dr. Leah shared, that we will have more recommendations, but there are three that I'm putting out for your consideration right now. It's not actually in your handout, but under intentional leadership, there's an opportunity to simplify government. There is confusion around the role of government. We believe there's an opportunity to simplify the role of government. Okay, and the way to do that is assemble the Citizen Advisory and Special Emphasis Group Committee to help develop the vision strategies. There are leaders in the community already ready to assist doing that. The second recommendation is maximize municipal investment and achieve in your strategic priorities. And again, you can do that by empowering your churches, your mosques, your temples, and your nonprofit social service providers. They're already serving in the community. They're already actually doing the work. And so what that will do is again, simplify the role of government and then maximize municipal investment. And then lastly, foster more engagement in the intentional inclusive community. And that's just more around communication. So as these goals are developed, your cultural plan is actually developed, then the consistent communication, whether that's published on your website or some other consistent message around that, will resonate well in your community. I will pause here. I'll ask if there are any questions or any comments or any concerns about what has just been shared.
Okay. Counselor, have any questions or comment on this?
I do on slide thirteen, the disappointment of cities and all that, you know, that's fastest-growing cities. And still trying to keep it going. What are you talking about in there that, I mean, yeah, we knew it. And a lot of action's been taken, you know, by the city over the years to try to keep up with that growth. So is there something other than that part of it? Or, I mean, you referenced Dubai, which, you know, Dubai's got a lot of oil money and that's where it come from. And they can do those things. But I think, you know, the city has, even though we've talked about it for years as one of the fastest-growing cities, but it takes a lot, like the mayor has said, that, you know, to keep a city and meet all the infrastructure and everything else. And so when you do that, you've got to raise the tax rate. And the first thing you get, you go back to the late eighties when the tax rate here was eighty-seven cents. And we're a lot lower than that right now, doing a lot more. So it's hard to define that.
And so that, so what you're seeing, these are actually direct quotes from the actual participants from their perspective. So we took a deeper dive underneath that. And again, based on our initial research came the actual recommendation to simplify the government because based on our research, the city has done a fairly good job around that. And so there's a group that's ready to develop those benchmarks, create those cultural action plans to determine what more can actually be done. So to simplify the government and engage that community, actually do that, will sort of address that because this is an actual direct quote from one of the participants.
One of your recommendations was develop practices and procedures for developmental training and hiring because of the underrepresentation of individuals from ethnically diverse backgrounds. Did you get any numbers from city on what our ethnic breakdown is in, within the city employment and on council to compare it to what our population is?
There is some, already some data that's already, part of the research has already been done. And again, these are the actual emerging themes surrounding that. And quite frankly, a lot of times they were, we actually started doing this work at a very interesting time in the city of Pearland. There was historic mayor election, so we recognize there's some sentiment around that. But in this particular case, what we noticed and what was shared with us particularly in a couple instances, when you think about the more culturally diverse community, what really came up was in the industries that are driving this community, one of them being healthcare. And so a lot of the concerns, some of the concerns that individuals from culturally diverse background had is, how do you interact with those individuals when you're doing healthcare, particularly death, particularly common inside those communities? So from that perspective, the representation for those individuals that understand the actual culture is actually coming inside. The other issue was in terms of just having more diversity at city leadership, city council. And so you saw that in the actual mayor's race itself. So you have a lot of diversity and present for the first time that individuals were actually vying for position in terms of city council. So from that perspective, those individuals are talking about when they go in and interact with city employees for city services, they want someone that look like them. They want some representation that looks like them. When they look at city council, quite frankly, they said they want more diverse representation to actually reflect the actual community. And this is just data that we've actually ascertained from the actual research itself.
Well, Pearland is about twenty percent Hispanic, sixteen percent black. And we've got one black and one Hispanic on city council, which represents about twenty-eight percent. If anything, we're more biased toward male and not, you know, diversity as far as, you know, ethnic.
Yeah, and I understand, I understand where you're coming from. And this is really more forward-thinking in terms of what diversity looks like because when we think about that and look at the actual school system that has seventy-five different languages spoken, and this is more likely than not your actual pipeline that will eventually drive your community. So this group is more looking at forward-thinking. So how do we create this landscape and maintain this cosmopolitan city for the future generations? So when they're thinking about the seventy-five different languages and diversity in the school system, then automatically they think about, does this actually reflect the school system and the leadership positions and roles?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ordinal?
Well, I'll follow up on that one. Wouldn't it have been a good idea to look at the school district, not city council? And if you look at those diversity numbers, I think you'll find that historically, Pearland has had diverse leadership when our different cultural groups have run for office. I've reached out to several of our cultural leaders and flat-out asked some of them why they don't run for office. Indian community is a great example. And I don't mind pointing them out because I've talked to many of them. And their answer is, "That's not our role. That's not where we want to be." You know, I'm going to try to behave, but it's not going to be easy. I believe this basic study was brought to us about five years ago. I think Councilmember Owens would be the only one up here that was on council with me at the time, and council shut it down. And I'll be honest, I'm glad I did five years ago because we're talking about, we talked to twenty-seven people. We talked to seventy-five other ones. We talked to about a hundred people in a city of a hundred and something thousand. I, I have issues with that. And I want to be the first to say, I am very proud of Pearland's diversity. The fact that we are the most diverse city outside of Houston, as a suburb of Houston, which is the most diverse city in the country. I just got back from China to learn something about that culture because we have a large Asian and Chinese population. I love diversity. I, and let me go back to, my family's been here for over a hundred years. So I know the history. I've seen the growth. I don't want to hear east-west ever again. Because let's be honest, what it is is new and old. It's the people that have lived here and it's the people that have moved here. And you have two different backgrounds and looking at things. And it's more a political background than it is anything else. It is one that has moved from the northeast and the west coast that is a very different political aspect than what central and what Pearland and what they refer to as the heartland of the country is. And I don't like the idea that diversity is being used in this manner at all. I, we're going to make government simpler by making it more complex and getting them involved in more things. I, I'm going to have to have somebody explain that to me. I am a very limited government man, very limited government person across the board. I will be honest, separation of church and state, I view that our founding fathers said, "Here's government's role." And let's say this can is what they viewed as government's role in our lives. Everything else in this room, leave to your faith, leave to your culture. Don't let government get involved in your faith and your culture. Unfortunately, in this country, we've, we haven't listened to that. We've let our faith and our culture get involved in government. And it's come to a two-party system that both grow government, they just grow it in different ways to support different ideas of culture and faith. I think that's the wrong way to go. I think it's get government out of my culture and my faith. Allow me to do that, allow me to deal with my neighbors and, and limited government's role. I would really love to talk to the person that you, that said the mud taxes are too high. I totally agree with them. I think that's an accurate statement. My problem is, believe me, I, as a conservative, I ran on raising taxes for reelection. I've talked to a lot of people about taxes. Not one of them could tell me what their mud tax rate was. They just said the city taxes are too high. If we want to know what the highest tax rate is, it's my employer, the school district. By far in the state of Texas, school district is going to be your highest percentage of your property tax. So it's interesting to me that somebody brought up mud taxes. You know, there's so many other things I would love to go in. I, I just want to know what the next step is of this. What did, what did we gain for eighteen thousand dollars that we didn't know before? And that's a half rhetorical question, but Ian, take a stab at it.
I hope I have a whole answer to it. So with the, with the emerging themes that Dr. Carter talks about, they're... I think I can understand the sentiment that you're not feeling pleased with. But what I actually perceived and took away from this was quite the opposite. What you guys were just talked about simplifying government. What we heard over and over from the diverse populace as the study defined it was not a discontentment with government or not that government needed to be inserted. It was more so how to acclimate or acculturate into the existing government. We found everyone to be actually really pleased with it. The specific example you were referring to with a mud tax was it happened to be a financier that moved in from another country. So they were astutely aware of their taxes and could share that number. For the most part, the next steps moving forward are going to be making government more accessible to people. What we just found out were, what we found were more so perceived stigmas. And about ninety-nine percent of what we found, and after the study I would endeavor, that's probably a commensurate percentage nationwide with some of this. Perception is the greatest impediment to feeling assimilated or acculturated. So the steps we got from this were really what were, what makes you not feel included? And really, they were really minuscule things. They weren't alterations or changes to the government. And it fit very well within Parks and Recreation. And I think maybe from the perspective of augmenting or altering government as a larger piece may not be the appropriate story. It's altering the services that we provide for equality of life. And then additionally from that, we can take some of our frontline customer services that the city can provide and make those more accessible to people that may traditionally feel excluded without any actual addition or growth of government.
And the fact that we paid eighteen thousand dollars for that, I guess is my problem. I, I think anybody that's run for council could have told you that the community doesn't get involved. I mean, our voter turnout shows that. How to fix that, there's been a lot of candidates that have run on that's what they're going to do and not one of them's sitting up here right now. So that hadn't, hadn't got a whole lot of people out to vote.
Councilman, if I may?
Sure.
I think we're saying the same thing, but we're saying it differently.
But we spent eighteen thousand dollars to hear you say it differently.
Well...
That's my issue.
I understand that. And what I'm suggesting to you is that there is a different perspective. And that's the purpose and the reason that we actually did this. The three stratas that we were specifically focusing on was religion, socioeconomics, and race. Those were the ones that we were actually...
All three things I think government should stay out of.
Absolutely. I understand that. However, there is a constituency in this community that's not all affluent. And there are some food deserts in this community. And there are some individuals that believe that there is some tremendous opportunity to engage at a deeper level that city council members may not be aware of.
And I've served on most of the nonprofit boards that serve those communities. I choose to live in one of our lowest socioeconomic areas. So please don't tell me that this body doesn't understand that.
I don't think that's what we're suggesting. We're giving you the voice of the community and we're sharing that with you. And in addition to the individuals that, we talked about the actual reach. These are the actual individuals that are actually doing the social services inside the community, nonprofit social service providers.
And I know a lot of those people that are in that list. And I guess for me, part of it is, if you feel like you need to tell me, then obviously you don't feel like I know. And I'll put that on me. Maybe I should have done a better job of explaining that.
Well, there's certainly a tremendous opportunity for the community to understand what diversity actually means because it's overwhelmingly, it means different things to different people. And that's a tremendous opportunity.
So I think finding one definition is going to be very difficult. I mean, we can do this all night. I don't think we'd get anywhere...
I understand.
You know, and I do apologize to you.
It's okay.
You don't know me.
It's okay.
You know...
It's okay. It conjures up sentiments from people from all different walks of life. And so it's not personal. I appreciate you sharing that feedback. And some of your constituents in the community actually really feel the same way. And so there's, again, there's a tremendous opportunity to define what it actually means in the city of Pearland. And what I'm hearing you say is that it's already been done and it's an opportunity to communicate.
No, 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 no. I, in no way do I think diversity has been defined in this city, or I'll be honest, any city. Because I think diversity is different to everyone. It's different, it's different in Pearland now than it was twenty years ago when I was in high school. It's different now than it was a hundred years ago when my grandfather was a sharecropper. It's, it's different in this room than it would be in a restaurant five feet, you know, half a mile down the road. And I do apologize. I don't want to sound like I'm attacking, but I have a tendency to share my thoughts and share my feelings very openly. And this has just hit one that, I'll be hon, I just don't view it as government's role in any way, shape, or form to define this for the people. But I'll be honest, my biggest issue is we talked to a little over a hundred people directly. And we're calling that a study... And we're calling that a study. And in some ways, the study seems to be proud that it focused. It, it wasn't an across-the-board, it was a focused approach.
That was, that was the intent for a focus group study, yes sir.
I, I, I understand. And I have trouble going for a study in a city as large as we are and saying that 27 of the participants, we identified directly because, because why? I'll be, if I'm going to directly identify participants, it's probably because I'm going to get the data I'm looking for. I, I don't know why else we would do that. I, like I said, I, I voted against this, what I assume is a very similar study five years ago. And for right now, this has just confirmed the reasons I voted against it. And, you know, council, color wasn't as diverse at the time, but we had a very diverse group when you looked at religion, when you looked at sexual orientation, when you looked at several other factors. So, I...
Councilman, if I may add, individuals from sex, different sexual orientations don't necessarily feel comfortable. And one of the things they shared is that...
The one that sat up here, believe me, had no trouble.
Well, that's, that's one of many. And I, again, I appreciate your feedback. And again, we're just delivering the voices of your constituency and your, and your citizens. And it's a tremendous opportunity.
Of 100, of 103...
Actually, it's more like, it's more close to 10,000, sir. So we were very focused, we were very focused. And we chose those individual things on the...
You didn't spoke, you did not speak to 10,000. You spoke to a little...
Our strata, if I may, Councilman.
I understand that.
Our strata was based on socioeconomics, religion, and race. And we chose those leaders who had influence, who actually provide those services.
And, and I know several of the leaders. And like I said, we can do this all night, I will pass it down.
Eric, I should pick it up for yours. You're welcome. Mr. Marine, would you join us on this?
Thank you, Mayor. So, so a couple of things. Five years ago, this council didn't look the same. I, I don't think you can compare the council now to council five years ago.
No, I wouldn't try to.
You know, it, it changed about two years ago. And, and, you know, I guess that diversity came two years ago when, when I got elected. You know, one of the things that I stated when I got elected was, you know, I, I want to make sure that the people knew that I got elected because I was the best candidate and not because I was black. And, and so, and I still hold by that and I hold to that. And I think the residents of Pearland, you know, agree. You stated also that, you know, it's old versus new. I, I wholeheartedly agree with that. I, I think it is more old versus new. However, even Councilmember Owens, I guess he might have let it slip, but, you know, he said, you know, west side and east side. And I consistently hear that. And, and, you know, even though we, we don't want to believe that, that's, 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 you know, I mean, it's pretty much what, what Pearland has amounted to, which, you know, it's, it's not, I can't say it's sad because the west side of Pearland has built up more recently than the east side of Pearland, but it's what we're stuck with, right? So, you know, old versus new, west versus east, whatever. I mean, I don't think it should be a versus, it's just, we, that's Pearland, right? So that's, that's what we have. Political views, yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's kind of just spread throughout, spread throughout the city. You know, I think we've had a lot of consultants come in here that we knew what the answer was and we spent, you know, quote unquote, not useless money, but money that, you know, you could have told me that Orange Street needed to be redone. You could have told me a whole lot of things that I've complained about, Tony, you, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Carbone, or no, everybody on here that's been, been on council since I've been on, has complained about from a consultant standpoint. I've, I've heard each and every one of us complain about a consultant. Here we spent 18 grand. Yeah, we knew there's parts of Pearland that needed, or not parts of Pearland, but things in Pearland that need more diversity. And by that, I mean, maybe in programming, things that, you know, the parks and rec, you know, offer to the community. I stated, you know, clearly at, you know, the meeting when we voted on this, I don't like any of the concerts at concert in the park. You know, I don't listen to the musicians that come to concert in the park. I'm not afraid to say that. But, you know, so maybe we need to change that up a little bit. I mean, there's other things that Pearland could use, since our community has changed so much in the past five, past five years it's changed, in the past 10 years it's changed tremendously. And, and, but there's nothing that's going to necessarily, and I agree with you from this standpoint, that's going to change, one, the people that run. These studies aren't going to change the people that run. Two, it's not going to change the people that go out and vote and elect us. And so, you know, I think, I think, you know, with all due respect, the study kind of lost all of us when it came to, you know, who sits up here and, and who, who kind of governs the city. Now, we as city officials can make a conscious decision, need to make a conscious decision to help or to implement, not help, but implement programming. Or if Chris needs, you know, help with something, or Clay comes to us and says, hey, we want to implement this program, maybe it's a Cinco de Mayo or something like that, then, you know, hey, okay, fine. I mean, I, I don't know that that needs council vote or council approval. I mean, it's more of, that's his thing to do. And so, you know, I, look, I, I, I don't, I don't think that there's necessarily a quota that we need to be trying to meet on council. And so, I'm just going straight into the government part of it. However, I do think that council does need to represent the citizens that, that it serves, right? We don't have one woman up here, and we hadn't had one since 2014, I want to say. And so, you know, that's a problem. I, I don't know if anybody else in this room thinks it, but I think that's a problem. Now, to say that, you know, has there been a qualified woman to run? You know, who knows? A qualified woman hadn't gotten elected, though. And so, there's nothing that we can do as council members besides knocking on doors, making sure we get reelected. You know, I, I can't go out for everybody else.
Diversity.
Well, that's, but it, what I'm saying is, I, I agree with Councilmember Ordno from the standpoint of, the government can't do anything about, well, we can do certain things to encourage, but I mean, we put trust in, in Clay, we put trust in Clay's directors, John and Trent, to, to, to do those things and not necessarily something that we as a governing body, and correct me if I'm wrong, can, can, you know, say, hey, let's implement this. Now, can I come to Chris and say, or Clay and say, hey, you know, what about doing this? You know, what about doing something like this? Oh, definitely. And then, you know, they can decide, but that's not something that council votes on. You said, I think, I think that was, I think that was it from, for, for that portion of it. Like I said, I, I, I do feel like there's, you know, when, when you look from that side, looking at this council, I mean, you know, essentially you see five white guys, me and, and Trent. And so, you know, I'm not, I'm not necessarily saying that, that we couldn't use, you know, a woman here. I think we should have a woman. Hopefully, a woman gets elected while I'm on council. Hopefully, someone else of color gets elected, somebody else black, or somebody else Hispanic gets elected, you know, while I'm on council. But more than anything, hopefully, the people that get elected are qualified for this position. And so, I, I think that comes first. I know that comes first. And, you know, so, so that, that's my council talk. But as far as programming, yes, I think the city does need better programming. I think the city does need programming that, that speaks to the community that the city has, that's different than it was five years ago, that's different than the council was five years ago. You know, I, I think that, you know, hopefully, Chris has taken that into, into account. I'm thinking that this study was meant more than anything to show us that. I do agree with Councilmember Ordno, 100 people is not a lot for a city that has 120,000. We're well over 100,000. And so, you know, I, I feel like we could have gotten probably a better grouping, you know. I don't know what, what parts of town these, these folks came from. But, you know, 100 people is more like Pearland back when it was 33,000. I, I think, you know, if we could send out some studies or something like that, I, I feel like we would have gotten a lot better response and feedback. You know, I, as far as the church and state, I, I'll, I'll leave those comments alone.
If I may, if I may, and I'm pleased to say that we're saying the same thing, we're just saying it differently. I absolutely agree with everything you're saying. So we're not talking about quota programs in any way. We're saying the same thing, we're saying it differently. What I would ask you to consider on behalf of the individuals that participated, and I understand that when we look at 100 people, we're really not looking at the reach of these individuals that need the services. So the reach of these individuals that are working on the front line are exceeds thousands. So it's not just 100 people, it's these individuals that are the, the connect point in terms of having adequate resources. So what I would ask the council to consider, if there was a group and there is one ready, a cultural equity inclusion task group or committee, would you support it? Because there are a group of citizens that are ready to do that. And when we talk about the role of government, there's confusion, and I absolutely agree with you, that's not the role of government. But there are some citizens right now in this city that's, that love this town and that'll be willing to put something in place to become the beloved community and embrace the diversity that you have. And so, that's essentially what we're saying. But we're also sharing the kind of insights. And it's clear that there's still some confusion around what diversity means to this city. And that's a tremendous opportunity that, that we believe is for the city as well as the community to kind of create the brand and what it means. And so that everyone can be aligned and your citizens can be engaged. Because there is some disengagement out there through those who actually have the reach for those who are not participating in your surveys. And quite frankly, for those who are not voting, they don't believe they can because they're in unincorporated areas and they think that's by design. So there are a lot of other things underneath, the thought process underneath that.
I'd like to add a couple of things. I'm starting my 13th year on council. And probably I went through the roughest one I've ever had. My first council, I, I was in a runoff there, too. And, and sometimes I get caught, you know, on east-west, but mainly, it's in directions when people want to come into Pearland. And they say, okay, where'd I go to? And I say, okay, if, if you're going on, on the west side of Pearland and Shadow Creek area and all of that, you can get off and go 288. I mean, and then, you know, and the other side, if you're going to the east side, come on down the beltway and get off on Pearland Parkway. And there's, but, you know, that came up a lot in this election on the east side and west side. And I wish it, you know, and I always tell them, you know, we got an east side, west side, north and south, but we all want Pearland, is what we are. And going back to talking about women on here, I served previously with three women on city council, and we only had five members. And all of them were really good. They, they were very well outspoken, they're very good people sitting up here on this. And, and you know, one of the things that this year, you know, in the elections, we had the biggest turnout we've ever had in this election. And mine because of the one that was running against me in that, that period of time. But I was, the Islamic community came out and walked with me and on the, around Country Place and those areas in there. And they came out, got together, walked with me. And I know they did with the mayor also. And so, I think a lot goes into, you know, the people and the capabilities of what you bring to the table as a, as a council member. But one other thing, on my years on council, I've always tried to get the pastors to come in and, and do the prayer for us. We do one at every, one of our council meetings. And on a couple of occasions, we had a list, about three or four people that are pastors in the city. And after a couple of times that they came up and prayed, it just went by the wayside. And for whatever reason, I don't know, I would like to see them come up, you know, the different pastors within the city to come up and, and, and do the prayer instead of us doing it here. So, but, you know, and that was tried. And I don't know if it's separation between church and state or whatever it is, or they just got too much on their table. I think probably anybody that has a title as being a pastor, then you've got everybody that's in your church, that's on your shoulders. And so, it's probably one of the most difficult positions that you could ever have, especially in this day and time. But I think, you know, and given that the number of people that we had to come out and to vote, and to the Shadow Creek side, previously, I talked to people over there on that side and they, just like you said, they get up, they go to medical center and work, they come back, they pick up their kids, if they got children, and, and they're there and they go to bed at night and get up the next day and go. And a lot of them thought they still lived in the city of Houston. And they didn't know it, you know, on there. So, this is the first time that we've seen that many people from that side of towns come in and actually vote. And I thought that was a, a great deal. I mean, we've never had an election and have that many people in a, you know, in a runoff and that many voters come in. I mean, they were just pouring in. And so, I think, you know, that, I don't know what the council can do to, to make any difference. I don't know, you know, the diversity, I always talk about the diversity. And, and my race this time, it was proven that Pearland is the most diverse city in the whole Gulf Coast area. I mean, it's there. And the numbers probably equate up to where Houston's at on diversity, if you just go by numbers and not total people on there. So, I think, you know, the diversity is there, but yeah, I'd like to see more people get into it and probably at one point in time, if we ever go to council districts, you may see totally difference.
Hi, and to your, absolutely. And so, the diversity, absolutely there. The opportunities and engagement, because there is an issue of connectedness and there is some emerging themes around equity. And everyone in the community is not affluent. So we under, we understand from our work that representation conjures up different emotions and different feelings. And if, as I close, I would just share with you, there's like a, it's like a pear on a tree is ripe. Your diversity is ripe on the tree and it's ready for the harvest. If you leave it there, then there's no reason to have a Ferguson or Dallas or a Baltimore. And there's some folks in your community that think that's actually possible. And for those who love the community, there's no reason for that. Again, the pear is on the tree and, you know, you know, if you take it off, one is ripe. If not, it gets mushy and then you're, then there's something else you have to deal with. So with that, I respectfully thank you for your time. We certainly appreciate being a part of this.
We got two more council members to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Have there more?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I serve on the International Festival Board. So some of these people that feel like they're not being included, I welcome to come serve on the board. I mean, we moved the International Fest from the Independence Park, which is on the far east side of the city, to the west side of the city, to the town center. So more people could participate. So it was a higher, more visible venue. And you know what? The numbers last year blew all the other years away. We moved the tree lighting ceremony from the east side of the city to the town center. Why? Because it was a more centralized location, more people, a bigger draw, a bigger venue, nicer place to do it. So, I mean, we've, we've done a lot of things here. So some of these people that, that I, I think, I would love to talk with some of them because I want to know specifics. What, what makes them think they're not included? This is kind of a high-level overview, but there are specifics that they don't feel why they're included. And a question for Dr. Leah. When y'all, when y'all do the concerts in the park, how do y'all decide on what the bands are or whatever, what, what venue it's going to be?
So we take a survey of the cities in the region and see what types of musics are trending. And then we usually pull a group of those down, a recommendation, and put that before our Parks, Recreation and Beautification Board to listen over those and then make the final selection there. So we try to get some community input into that one as well.
And if, if I'm correct, I've been to a couple of those concerts in the park and it's all kind of different music. It's very diverse. It, it's not one type of music every, every Friday. It's, it's something different.
That's the goal of it, yes sir.
Yeah. So I, and I agree, I don't think government should get involved with, you know, all of this stuff. And if churches want to do anything, I welcome and I'll, I'll support, you know, whatever they want to do. If there's outside organizations that, that want to do something, you know, I'll, I'll do whatever I can to help support them. That, that's part of, you know, with the International Fest, that was to, you know, to get a flavor of different cultures and, and, you know, bring it to the masses and let them decide, you know, do they like that piece of culture or not? And if they don't, move on to the next booth. There's, there's something out there for everybody. So I, I don't know. I, I have, I, I take great concern with the money we spend on this because I don't feel like I'm getting anything that I didn't already know. And if there's organizations out there that want to, want to get involved, there's plenty of ways for them to get involved, but they choose not to and stand back and then say, we're not doing anything. As far as, you talked about Dallas and somewhere else, I can't remember where you mentioned, but I, I give it to our, our police department for the training that they go through and to keep us from being those Ferguson's and those Dallas's and, and stuff like that. So, I don't know. I, I have a big issue with this, too, because I, I think we're here and anybody that's willing to, to organize and try to help, I, I think they would get our support.
our support, but to say that, you know, we're, we're not supportive, or that we need to do something as a government, I, I don't think that's our place to be involved with that.
Just real quick, any city could end up as a Ferguson or, or a, I mean, that, that just took one bad cop, or, I mean, so...
That's true.
So, so, I mean, I know that we have a good police force, and, and, you know, but we continue to bring in different officers. I mean, we don't know, neither, none of us up here know every officer on the street. So, I, I mean, I don't, I don't, that comparison is, is, well, I'll just leave it at that, but any city could be that, and, and...
But with training, that helps.
It does help, but nobody else up here besides me will, will ever know what that could potentially be like. Nobody else in this, well, up here besides me will know what that could potentially be like, so I'm gonna just leave it at that. Go ahead.
I'm done.
Carbone?
I'll try to make it quick, Mayor. Parks Department paid eighteen K, I made a few observations. The study determined there's unlimited square miles that Pearland can grow to, that single moms have trouble paying their taxes, and the mud taxes are high, that there's seventy-five different dialects spoken in our schools, which if you go to any of the state of the schools, you can find that out, and there's east-west divide. This was paid out of the Parks Department. I didn't hear anything about programming for the parks, changing anything up. I, I heard about the, the ripening pear that's ripe for picking, so I went back to the reap and the harvest slides to make sure I didn't miss anything, and we take a quote from the mayor talking about a cosmopolitan city, then we start talking about Dubai and Brussels. And I don't get it, I, I'm sorry I voted for this study to begin with. I was hoping for some actionable things for the Parks Department, and...
Like programming.
Yeah. So, and I don't think we're saying the same thing.
To, to your point, Councilman, there are, there are some items that went beyond the scope of what was presented tonight, and it sounds very much so like this council would like to see what those action steps are from the, from what we're gonna produce side. So, I would be happy to produce that document to see what the spin is gonna be on some of those programs and how they directly correlate to the study, and I hope when that's done, it'll be a, a different understanding of, or, understanding's not the right word, a different sentiment towards what we've collected there to speak to that point.
I'd certainly like to look at that, to change my mind and attitude, but right now, this, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
It's a waste.
Dr. Carter, you know, when you think, talk about diversity in Pearland, I think a good example of that is Derek Reed and me, and myself. We both are, have Reed as our family name, but the big difference between us is that he's three, about three and a half inches taller than I am, a heck of a lot better-looking, and actually, he looks like Denzel Washington. So, I think we're making great progress in Pearland with diversity. He's my buddy. We both went to University of Texas, so we'll hook 'em horns, both. But, but I want to thank you so much, Dr. Carter, you did a superb job, you and, and our Parks Director, and, Director, and Chris, Chris O'Leary. I think, I think this has been very useful for us, I think it has been something that forces us to consider an aspect that we need to work on. So, I thank you so much for your presentation, and we greatly appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We, moving in our agenda to item number seven, are there any mayor or council issues for future city council agendas? You got one?
I, I just wondered when the school zone and the speed limit thing was gonna be on. I, I, I'd asked for that last meeting, last regular meeting, and so, I didn't see it on this agenda, so I'm assuming it's gonna be on the next agenda.
Staff's got a extensive layout of the background, so we'll have that up, teed up for the next one. That's, that was the plan.
Okay, appreciate it.
If you follow the agenda with me, the next item is, says other business. Item eight is adjourned, and I will adjourn.